Together, at February two, uh, I'm sorry, twenty seven, two thousand thirteen, regular board meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Farquhar.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Cranser.
Here.
Pat.
Here.
Stockton.
Yep.
Paul.
I'm here, sorry.
Present. Brings us to item C, open to the public, agenda items only. Please leave your comments to three minutes, your name and your address. Let's move right on. Brings us to D, entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is. I'll submerge that.
Second.
Entertainer motion to remove number one. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Just mostly move the first.
Right.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Cranser.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
Yes. Entertainer motion to accept line item two through five.
Number one.
Second. Roll call, please.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Cranser.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
Yes.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trusty Farquhar.
Yes, sir.
It's your time.
Uh, I would like to address the minutes pertaining to page two of the minutes were proposed to the Sow waste contract. A couple lines there, I just want to clarify. I was not specifically asking that the yard waste be removed, I just wanted to know if the numbers pertain to either way. So we can add that in, I appreciate it. Additionally, um, in the issue of full disclosure, I noticed that we were here in the last paragraph of that section, the trustee Farquhar stated for full disclosure, he was, has a working relationship with a number of businesses, including Skyline Disclosure, which is in ally ways. I just also want to clarify that the original point to bring that up was pertaining to the disposal of well. So if we could have that included in the motion, I don't know what it is.
So you look for a motion to amend?
Not a motion to amend both of those issues, we think that was.
No second? Motion, I guess.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. We've got a second. Any discussion?
I have something. I believe that, uh, Mr. Farquhar did say that he does not want it because he does not use it. So... I believe that was one of the, well, the sticking points he kept stating two weeks ago when we were discussing this, is that that I don't use it, so I don't want it. That I want it taken out of the contract.
If, if I may, I said that I don't use it, and I have, and I might think what it's actually costing us. And what I was concerned about is we were given a list of items to pick from, which were three vendors, which did not delineate the difference between with and without yard waste. And with five year, seven year, or whatever else, and what I had requested as part of this, which was not permitted, we request a table so we can further review the details of all proposals. The fact that I personally don't use yard waste, I did bring it up as a valid point, and personally I don't feel the need for all the residents to pay for services that they don't necessarily need, I didn't indicate that. However, I was not saying I'm opposed to it, I just really wanted to know what it costs for. So that was my point, not that I was directly opposed to it in its entirety, although it doesn't cost us, because we came up with it as free, and I defended it as nothing is free.
But the one thing that I also stated too is that we should not have personal agendas, we should not have personal agendas, we have to do what's right for the village. If people don't use it, right now, we're saving them a penny for the first coming year. And if someone doesn't, doesn't want to use it, then don't use it. But the problem is, or the thing is that we're doing what's right for the village and is giving the, the...
Trusty Stockton, how do you know you're doing what's right for the village when you're not even looking at all the numbers?
We had the numbers in front of us.
Why'd you do that?
We had the numbers in front of us, we just came off of a ten-year contract, and we're calling it to another ten-year.
One at a time, let's keep it a discussion.
Trusty Stockton, there's twenty-four pages of documents that went into supporting the information that was there, we were not provided prior to making the vote on this, we were given a single page that had a spreadsheet that had three options. It did not break down by yard waste or not, did not break down five-year or seven-year plan. What I had been asking for was not to pick one vendor over another, I was not in favor of picking any of the vendors until we could review all the information. I was annoyed by the fact that it was so easy to just push it through without looking at the information of the owner of the home, that was why I was frustrated.
Well, you'll have your opportunity here, probably in about a half hour, vote no on it, like vote no on everything else. But that's all I'm gonna say.
I'm merely asking that my comments, the amended to reflect what I actually said.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, I mean, I mean, Jay, trustee Farquhar, you just said that you don't use it and you don't know a few people that do use it, okay?
Right.
And not putting words in your mouth.
Right.
I also can look out my door, I personally use it, I know my neighbor uses it, so I don't, and I'm not saying you do, but do the people that use the waste product in our town?
Yards.
The yards. And this would benefit them to have this included in, into our yard waste. But here's the thing with that, is we've never sat down and said, okay, this house uses it, that house does, and this house doesn't. But to implement that, it's, it's a waste of money to try to go that route, it's not...
My point is, we can't properly assess whether it's a waste of money or not, that we don't know what the cost is. We weren't even looking at the numbers to identify what the actual cost was for that service. That's what I was objecting to, is passing something without knowing what the cost is. That's what I was objecting to. Do I use it, do I mind the village pays for it if it's a, if it's a petty difference in price and it benefits the community as a whole? I'm not opposed to that if I know what the road cost is. We did not have the opportunity to review the cost of it, that's my objection. The folks in Galveston, as an example, probably use it less than anybody because they have the smallest yards. So you've got hobbled homes in there that don't use it at all properly, you know? So my point is, is you've got a whole area that wouldn't use it. I just want to know what the cost was, that's all I wanted to know. Before we made a decision on it, I want to know the cost.
Okay, let's move on to this motion. Motion to amend. Roll call.
Horn.
Yes.
Cranser.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
No.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Okay, what was your other, uh...
Gray didn't say that.
I'm sorry?
No.
I'm sorry? That's a favorable motion. Trusty Farquhar, what was your other issue you wanted to bring up? You talked two issues in the beginning.
No, it was pertaining to the issue about yard waste and the disclosure about Homewood as well as Ally. I know that is the reason why it came up originally, and is because there was the intent to say that I was not able to make an objective decision of some sort because of having a relationship with Homewood, which was a current vendor, but I also had relationships with Ally, and I disclosed both of those, the only ones listed.
Let me, let me get some clarity on that.
Yes, sir.
You have a relationship with Ally or one of their subsidiaries?
Well, it was, it's Skyline Disclosure, which is now part of the Ally Republic Corporation.
That's correct, but indirectly, you do not have any business with Ally?
Other than having a personal relationship with the consultants and stuff still.
Okay, now, we're gonna go back to entertain a motion to accept item one under D consent. So move.
Yes, sir.
Can you use second on that?
Looking for it.
Okay, there it is. Second.
Roll call.
Cranser.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
No.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
No.
Horn.
Yes.
Now we can move on. Any communication from the clerks, all?
I have no report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Administrator Wallace?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the agenda before you is a, uh, information regarding the availability as we move forward for online bill pay for the utility bills. This is merely by way of examples, some information that's being investigated. Additionally, I have additional investig-, uh, information that was given me tonight that will further be investigated. The goal is to establish the ability to pay utility bills online for residential use with credit cards, um, ACH, which is a one-time check type thing, you can have it drawn right out of your account, and the ability to also have automatic debit to your accounts, which would be done on an automatic basis. What I'm seeking this evening, I, I, in this information, I've included some examples, excuse me, but to, that provide some information for thought purposes only, um, when the decision time comes. All I'm asking tonight is authorization to proceed if the board so, is so inclined to do that. And the authorization to proceed is to pursue, to pursue this and, and get it to a point to where, um, we have everything set and the, the board has to actually vote to implement. Have to answer any questions?
First, I'd like to put that out as a form of a motion, so then we can move off into the question.
Second.
Any discussion?
I motion it.
Can you grab your microphone, please?
I feel it's on.
So move. Roll call.
Cranser.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
Yes.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, sir. Item number two is before the board, as it came out of committee, for the suggestion for a multi-year, which would be a two-year village sticker and animal license. We're getting to the point that we still have time to order this. Some of the benefits that we see from the municipal side is the mailings that go out each and every year, the having to bring the, uh, the residents into the, into the building in, at, at one specific point. You know, the cost of the stickers are really minimal at this point, but it's more of a convenience factor for both sides, for everyone to get through. The ordinance is easily changed as I would communicate with, with council to virtually keep everything at the same rates that they are on an annual basis, just move that up to a, a two-year basis, and, um, all the, uh, the late dates and everything would be commensurate to the two-year, uh, multi-year sticker. It's just up for, uh, discussion, and, uh, if we want to move ahead with that, then certainly we would need the authorization for the attorney to amend the ordinance, and I would be happy to work with him on that.
Make a motion, we have the attorney. Make a motion, we have the attorney go over and change the ordinance and proceed as does as planned.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Pat.
Yes.
Stockton.
Yes.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Cranser.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Nothing on the mayor's agenda at this time? Anything, Mr. Wallace, with the engineers?
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I have a question going back to, um, the, maybe a month ago, was when Sam Schwartz Engineering Firm was, uh, run on to deal with the residual of the phase one for Egyptian Trail, that Tech Three was not able to...
The intersection studies?
Yes. Uh, question I have pertaining to that is, with my understanding that Tech Three was originally capable of dealing with all of phase one, uh, which would have included the, the intersection analysis that leads up to phase two, uh, we had all three engineering firms come in here, give the presentations, they each gave some consideration as to the results of that, for abilities of the Brooklyn Bridge Committee at the time. We had all three, was it November of the year and a half ago, uh, they came in and gave the presentations. In January of last year, we voted on that, uh, to proceed. Just going back to that, I just, I'm just confused because in looking at it, I believe Farnsworth and Scram both included the intersection analysis as part of their phase one. So now we're actually paying more for phase one because of the seventy plus twenty-five versus Farnsworth, I believe, was ninety for their phase one? I just want to make sure now, is that different, or is the village paying for that now, or is that Tech Three that's underwriting the difference a lot?
The, first of all, I don't believe that any of the, uh, bids or proposals, as they were, included these, because these two intersection studies were not requested as part of this phase one engineering by IDOT until, uh, the meeting took place with IDOT in January. So they would not have been included in the original proposals. Um, and this is an additional cost to the project, and we all know that, or we should know that, we are, uh, that is a, an STP project, uh, you know, with federal funds, and we have to provide some matching funds.
And so you get into it where we don't have the information at the moment, can I just ask that you go back and look?
Absolutely.
And just confirm where we were on that, just as a point of clarification.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you. And the only, the only one issue that, that may have come up at the time is, we were at the same time considering, um, partnering with the county on the Moni Manhattan Egyptian Trail signalization.
Right.
And because we did that, it took the necessity, if we hadn't have done that with Will County, we would have had to do it in the phase one engineering.
Absolutely.
We elected to do that with the county because it was a, a least expensive way for us to do that.
I, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, performing one vendor over another without looking at...
Absolutely.
There's...
Mr. Mayor, if I might back up, I'm sorry, for the, under the engineer's report, I do have a little bit of an update for, uh, the Safe Route School Project that is, had to be kicked off the March letting because there was a, um, uh, money's not available at the transportation level, there was some funding snafu there. Um, it was just kicked back for thirty days, it will be on the April letting, so construction is still planned for, um, this season, as was earlier indicated, I think in the, uh, late last fall or during the winter, I indicated it would be a spring or this year bill. So that is still on track, it just got kicked back thirty days on the letting. And that, that brings us up to date on that.
Are you through, sir?
I am, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items for the board's consideration. Uh, the first item is the ordinance approving the issuance of a special use permit on behalf of Robert Bush and his motorcycle club. The hearing was held before the Zoni Board, uh, back in December, and the Zoni Board made a recommendation to approve the same. The special use permit would be issued to the applicant based on, uh, his application subject to the following conditions: storage of motorcycles and related equipment, storage of records, uh, the organization's meetings shall be held inside the premises, any such meetings shall commence no earlier than nine AM and shall conclude no later than twelve AM. The applicant shall be permitted to have no more than two planned social events or fundraisers at the site on an yearly basis. The applicant should notify the Moni Police Department within, I'm sorry, thirty days in advance of any such event. Overnight stays by any member shall be prohibited. The applicant should also, or the, shall submit to background, criminal background checks of the directors of the corporation. Uh, following conditions shall also apply to special use permit, outside loitering shall not be permitted at any time, sale of alcohol beverages shall be prohibited, a list of all members of the motorcycle club shall be furnished to the village on an annual basis, and access to the facility is strictly limited to the named members of the motorcycle club. If there is a violation of any and all of these, uh, conditions, the, the special use permit is subject to suspension or revocation.
That's a ordinance, number, Madam Clerk.
Sixteen thirty-two.
Discussion? Let's, let's get into it first. So move. Second. Okay, now, before you get into discussion with us, Mr. Bush, would you like to come to the podium, sir? Because I'm sorry, you have some questions, and I probably don't have those answers. You could introduce yourself.
I'm Robert Bush, I'm the president of the chapter that's attempting to make the lease.
Discussion. Now, pass.
Okay, um, so, uh, I guess this would be, um, I guess this would be directed toward you, Mr. Bush. Do you have any minors who are, um, members of the motorcycle club?
No.
The other thing that I would like to amend to this is that we put in provision for background checks for the, um, the executive officers of the, uh, club?
Uh, yes, I did add that in my, it's not in the ordinance, but I did add it in my presentation that that would be part of this ordinance for criminal background checks.
Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, sir. That probably is. That's it.
So, um, there's other questions?
That would be great, especially if it's...
Yes. Okay.
Trusty Farquhar, any questions?
Oh, just, just want to make sure we take care of...
Anybody else?
Mr. Bush, I only have one question for you, sir. Uh, I, I want to start out in this, in an honest way. Have any of your club members, anybody been out in that facility since our last meeting, let's say, at the planning of zoning meeting?
Yes.
Are they aware that there's no occupancy, there's nobody supposed to be in there?
We pay rent there.
I understand.
And we pay electric and, uh, gas bill there, and I do have to go there periodically to check the heat, different things like that.
Have you had contact with your landlord?
Yes.
Whereas he could be there, meet you. What I was trying to say is, I think you're aware that we kind of red-tagged it in the past until we got all this cleared up, and I just want to make sure, you're gonna be a stand-up guy back there, I'm certain you're going to be, but if they're going back there and violating the ordinance from jump, I want that to be known also.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question, uh, did I understand that we can only meet there at nine AM to twelve AM, is that what you said?
Uh, between those hours, sir, nine AM and, you know, midnight. I, I think our, the concern would be like at two o'clock in the, maybe in the morning, we want some, I guess, quarter back there, so it'd be between nine AM in the morning to twelve, um, midnight.
For regular meetings, for our club meetings, is that what you're saying? And it's limited to only members in our chapter, our club, or...
Yes, sir. And then you could have two events, like you indicated, sir, um, social events per year, um, but they would, where other people could attend, but we would have to give an advance notice, and that's customary in a lot of villages. If you have something that's above and beyond, the village is, would, would, would like to know so we can, um, plan appropriately.
I do have one question, I'm sorry. You, you had stated club or chapter, is there a difference between the two?
Well, our club has thirty-nine chapters.
Your club has thirty-nine chapters?
Yeah, we are a chapter of a larger club.
Okay, so the, do you know approximately how many people would be...
Fifteen hundred people in the club. I have no idea who may attend our meetings, and meetings are open to anybody that's in the club.
So is our ordinance stipulating chapter or club?
Certainly, our intention is not just to have meetings there. We have, uh, two meetings a month, sometimes four, but, uh, at, uh, minimum, two meetings a month. But there are other activities that we would like to be able to go there for, we have a pool table there. My understanding is, of what you've written here, is that we can go there to have meetings?
Well, I, what I indicated, sir, was to conduct organization meetings with all meetings to be held inside the premises. I, I think, if I remember correctly, at, at the Zoni Board, you basically indicated it's for storage of records, storage of, uh, uh, parts, and you would have some organization meetings there.
I actually submitted a business plan, uh, we intended to use the facility the same way that, uh, Hall Chapter Harley-Davidson would have used, uh, any facility they meant. And their activities don't necessarily, they're not limited just to meetings. The social events, there are activities that are planned, uh, there's, it's a place that you can actually go to sit down and discuss. We have formal meetings, we have informal meetings, um...
But I'm not going to distinguish between a formal meeting and informal meeting, it's just our point that that's supposed to be, there's a limited use for that facility, and that's what we tried to delineate in the ordinance.
And that use is between nine AM and twelve PM at night.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, I'd like to follow, turn over to the administrator, the other. At one of your prior meetings with the municipality, you said you had fourteen members, I believe, and you were gonna, each one were gonna be issued a key, and you were...
We have nine members, nine members, ten members now.
Okay. So to clarity, I'm looking from you, because I know a little bit about biking my own self, if one of your, your chapter members decides to go over there and invite another chapter and brings a hundred bikers over there, that possibility is...
Well, I doubt if he could invite another chapter with a hundred members.
Well, let's say fifty.
It's a possibility that if he was there and he said, I'm here, you know, clubhouse is open, you can come out.
And Mr. Bush, the only reason I'm bringing this up is mostly these individuals probably have never been around too many motorcycles, and they need to know actually how it works. That's what we have between for question. Yes, sir.
Has, has life safety been out there to, uh, to occupancy, uh, on that building?
At this point, that building has failed. It's not up to par.
I'm just talking about, he says he has up to fifteen hundred members of the, of the whole organization. I mean, if they get two hundred out there, three or four people, and by total of two hundred, what is the occupancy of that building? As fire states, just like we have a hundred thirty-seven for the building.
Mr. Wallace should have been asked for you, sir.
Yes, sir. One of the conditions under section three is that the issuance of the special use permit is conditioned to follow the compliance with other pertinent local federal, state rules, regulations, ordinances, and building and fire code provisions. Once, I think Mr. Bush is trying to understand whether or not there's going to be a special use issue. If there is, then, then they will proceed with the inspection. Once that inspection is done and it is brought up the code, that's when the business license gets issued and they're ready to operate. So in short, to answer your question, absolutely, they'll take a look at the use of the building because it's other than industrial, and will conform to the codes as they exist today.
And they will, they'll, they'll be assigned to their, whatever statement that occupancy is, fifty people, or whatever it may be.
There should be, yes.
So, so, so to follow up on trusty Stockton's comment, so if it's a regular meeting and they've got ten members, and what is the situation, they're being able to say it's occupancy, that's hypothetical, then you wouldn't expect to have more than fifty people gathered at the premises unless it was one of those two sanctioned social activities that they run to the village?
No, I agree, that's what this says, trusty Farquhar.
I just want to clarify.
Those are special, possibly, what you're probably saying, as a, a charity run, something of that nature.
Right.
As far as with a bike club, they pretty much, they have, it's, it's just like any other kind of a like a men's club, where they get out, they play checkers, poker, whatever they do. So the chances are of a hundred bikers, like you say, sir, it's probably not going to happen. That's the best I can give you the information I have.
But the ordinance itself stipulates, the only ones that are supposed to be in the facility are members of the organization.
That's right.
That's what the ordinance stipulates, and I'm concerned, unfortunately, that you may not even be able to adhere to that. The only time you can have people at the buildings other than the listed members, uh, which the village is supposed to get a copy of whenever it gets updated or whatever, is that, sir, the only, the only time that you can have people non-members in the facility, according to what I read in this, would be if it's one of those rallies and such that they know if the village...
You need to understand also, and Mr. Bush already explained to you, they are a part of a much larger club.
I get it.
Not, okay, so, in essence, in theory, that whole club, which you guys declined, but it would never happen.
I understand.
Okay.
But we're talking about members of the club, what stipulation is in there?
Well, they are members of the club, that chapter is members of the club, the whole number. That's why.
I'm talking about non-members of the organization at all, because this stipulates they could be, well, any of the fifteen hundred members is what our ordinance, the law enforcement stipulates, not just the whole chapter. But, not, I'm just concerned for Mr. Bush's sake, that, let's say we approve this, and from the get-go, he knows that he cannot, I mean, that's something he needs to be able to address by looking at it as well and saying, "You know what, this isn't going to work," or "it's going to." And if it's not going to work for him, you know, he needs to, he needs to acknowledge that before he lessens more time or effort in the facility or anything else. He just needs to recognize, well, this is going to work or not. So, within the constraints listed here, however he defines his membership and all that sort of thing, the fifteen hundred of the broader organization, I just want to make sure that he's aware of the restrictions, so that he cannot say, "Yeah, that's fine," and then be like, "Well, I didn't realize that I wasn't going to be able to do this and this."
Actually, I was unaware of any ordinance pertaining to motorcycles. Apparently, this is a new ordinance that has just been written, is that correct?
Well, sir, it's, it's not the ordinance pertaining to motorcycles, it's a special use permit. And with a special use permit, technically, any village has a right to impose these more restrictions, because it doesn't, we don't have an ordinance per se on this type of activity. So, under the zoning ordinance in this law code, the village does have a right to impose these more restrictions.
Anybody else have any question for Mr. Bush?
I just want to further make sure I'm understanding this, because I, this is all new to me, so I am a little confused. So you said there's approximately fifteen hundred people in the club? You are a chapter of that club? I understand you have right now ten members.
That's correct.
So you made a statement, and, and, please don't quote me for words exactly, I want to make sure I'm understanding, that one of those members could come, you know, if they have a key, they could come, and they could tell other club members that the club is open? So, everyone that would come, per se, you know, let's say it's Sunday afternoon, that would come there, they would all be part of that broader club, is what you're, is that my understanding?
I could, I could go there now and get on the phone and call them and tell them to meet me there. And I could address that to my chapter.
So it's more than just your ten members?
I could, I could address that to my chapter, or I could actually call to other chapters and say, "I need some people to come out here to meet, we want to discuss so and so," whatever.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. So it's just whoever's within that club, and that's attorney, that's what this is related to, so they're, if they're in that club, they're allowed to be there?
The way I have it, trustee, I put a list of members of the motorcycle club.
Okay.
Shall be furnished to the village.
And that's what I'm trying to understand, the difference with the club and the chapter, and what it states here.
I think part of the problem is you don't understand their bylaws. Their bylaws have certain privileges for other bikers, I may not correct, sir, where technically, they don't shut down their doors to other chapters, because they're brothers, riders, I may correct, sir.
That's correct.
They have certain bylaws, and maybe it would be best if you could extend on some of that, because you guys are not aware of that.
Right, and that's what I'm just, I'm trying to understand it, so that I can make, you know, the best decision for you and for the village, so.
Anybody else have any question for Mr. Bush? Mr. Bush, you got any questions, though, sir?
Can I get a copy of that ordinance?
Absolutely, you will get one after the vote on that, this evening, of course, it's got to be signed and whatnot, so it'll be a couple of days before we have to sign everything down. Okay. And this is a form of a motion?
Huh?
Yes.
Stagman?
Yes.
Barquar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranger?
No.
Mr. Bush, your motion is carried, and we'll get this information, but you can come pick it up, so you can look at it.
The next item, we received a special use permit request on behalf of the, Mr. Horns and his group of the Axeman Motorcycle Club. Once again, he made a presentation before the zoning board on January sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. The board tabled it till tonight for the board review and consideration. The ordinance has the same restrictions as Mr. Bush. Basically, a special use permit would be issued to the applicant for the following activities: storage of motorcycles and related equipment, storage of records, to conduct meetings, with all meetings to be held inside the premises, any such meeting shall commence no earlier than nine AM, shall conclude on midnight. The applicant shall be permitted, they have no more than two planned social events or fundraisers at the site on a yearly basis. The applicant shall notify the Moonee Police Department thirty days in advance of any such event. Organized stays by any member shall be prohibited, and also criminal background checks of the board of directors is mandatory. The following conditions shall also apply to special use permit: outside ordering shall be prohibited at all times, sale of alcoholic beverages shall be prohibited, a list of all members of the motorcycle club shall be furnished to the village on annual basis, and access to the facility is strictly limited to the main members of the motorcycle club. A violation of any of the aforementioned conditions and/or restrictions may result in suspension and/or revocation of the special use permit.
Ordinance number sixteen thirty-three.
Sub move.
Mr. Vic?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to pull you up there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're going to get into discussion private, you're welcome. Now, give us your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Jim Horns, I'm the president of the Axeman OHM four. Just to kind of expound a little bit on what was discussed a little bit prior to that, and a couple of questions. One, the criminal background check, at whose cost is that to be done at? Is that on the club, is it, is it going to be done by the Moonee Police Department?
Only has limited resources.
Okay. Okay, because all our, the reason I ask is all our executive board members are public servants, so we've already been vetted more than once on that, so that's why I was asking. We have limited resources also, that's why I was asking, so.
Be honest, sir, most of the time when someone comes in for an application, whether it be for a special use or a variance, it's usually the cost of the applicant. With respect to any type of request made from the applicant, it's usually the, again, the applicant's cost.
Okay. The only, the other question I had, I guess, was then the, the way the wording is, the club access, the clubhouse access would be limited to listed members only, just like in any other organization. I'll give you a prime example, we were slotted to be a stop for the ride for Boo. It's for Brian Carey, Homewood firefighter who died in the land of duty, now, I think, two years ago. That would obviously apply under the special use, but during that timeframe, there's people that come, we would sit, just like any other organization, and meet with them at our clubhouse. If, following up with what you stated earlier, would we be, excuse me, would we be in violation if they were at our clubhouse meeting with us, because they're not members of our club?
No, it's two section.
Well, I'm just saying that during the year, they come in, and we do a lot of work with the Red Knights, they're also another motorcycle club south of us, that are made up of all firefighters. If we meet with their board, for example, at our clubhouse, and someone's driving by and they see a Red Knight, are we in violation? I'm kind of a stickler for trying to follow the rules, so that's, what, how you worded that, it kind of ties our hands to just my members.
Well, I think our concern, sir, is we just want some, whether it be you or anybody else for that matter, just some, I won't say control, that's a strong word, but some ideas who's going to be out there. That's for the neighbor's sake on both sides of High Fifty-Seven. That was our primary concern. What I would suggest is the board, you know, the board wants it adopted, they can adopt it, and we can look at your situation, Mr. Bush's situation, because each situation's completely different. But our intent, along with the zoning board, was to have some control, an idea about how many people would be out there, because it's still a, there's some, some residents in that area, and you're entitled to, you know, some.
Absolutely, I understand.
So each, you know, every time an ordinance is passed, a situation can arise where it's unforeseeable. But we can look at the ordinance and take your consideration, and the Bush concerns him to address it further, but we did tell the board, and we told yourselves that we bring up the board for tonight's action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Almost like your, your, sir.
Yes, sir. Just, just one comment, and I'm drawing on my memory, but I believe that the concern about members' access, members being present, came from a question at the zoning board of appeals, whereas there was a concern that keys may be passed totally outside of the membership of that chapter. And I believe that's what the, what the, the village at that time was trying to restrict the access, is that at least there's going to be membership there, that it's not going to be a free-for-all for, you know, I pass my key on to someone from Ohio so that they can come in, or whatever, that there's, the village's concern at that point was that there's going to be membership there who is tied to this special use, who has knowledge of it, understands the rules of the community, and therefore, someone will be there to maintain, you know, due diligence and proper order. And, and that's applicable to both of the special uses, that's, that was the, what I remember there, is, is, you know, it was really about passing keys on, and then all of a sudden, the people who applied for special use are nowhere to be found, and that facility is getting used in a way that wasn't intended, or wasn't agreed upon.
Well, I could say, you know, on behalf of our staff, that, as far as I look at it, and the executive board's held liable for anything, so that for me to hand my key over to just anybody, whether they're a brother, we're a much larger, larger organization overall, I still wouldn't do that, because it falls on me, and I have, you know.
And, and we understand that, but we have to, we have to cover that. I don't know specifically that, in, in, counsel, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know specifically that the intent here is to restrict you having a meeting with an outside vendor for planning, or Mr. Bush, and you're in the same situation, you meet with someone who happens not to be a member of your organization, or someone comes in as a visiting, you know, to visit your club or something. I, I don't know if, if that was the intent, but, you know, it was really about that, when that club is open, is that really the membership is there to be responsible, because they're the accountable parties.
Understood, and please don't misunderstand my questioning, I just wanted to make sure I was in compliance, I guess, so. Thank you. No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
How often do you, like, the rifle boot, how long do you have, you know, that's a paid old thing now, but how long do you have things like that work?
Well, this, we've never had the opportunity, we've been at the American Legion, so we've had a, we've ran one, actually, two now, two special events where we did a ride. One was for Saint Jude, and the other one was for Burn Camp. So, on average, we do that kind of stuff, we do two, and that kind of falls in compliance with that. But we, we try, like, chili cook-offs, we committed ten thousand dollars to Saint Jude this year, and whatever way we can come across with raising money to do that, that's the kind of route we're trying to look at doing, so. But do we have major parties and stuff like that? Absolutely not. We just don't have a facility, even, even with this facility, no facility, to do anything of, any of break the occupancy covenant, obviously.
I have one more question for you, sir, I just noticed, trusty, I was also, how big is that facility over there?
I would say it's about eighteen hundred square feet. Give or take.
Mr. Bush, you know the size of your facility over there, sir?
I'm not sure.
Just for now, just for the record.
How many meetings do you have, give weekly, months later?
No, we have, right now, we have only one month, or one meeting a month.
Okay, and how many in your local chapter?
Twenty-four.
And how many in the entire nation?
I would say, well, we have thirty, forty-two chapters throughout the whole country, we're constantly growing, so it'd be a solid O'Brien, honestly, I don't know. In Illinois, there's four chapters, I can tell you that much.
So, you have forty-five, so maybe a hundred, between a hundred and fifty, two hundred?
Give or take, yeah, there's, the Chicago chapter's a pretty good size.
Are you the president of the local?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you, where do you live? Are you living in?
I live in Rat Park.
Okay.
Now, I grew up in Crete, in this area, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Stagman?
Yes.
Barquar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranger?
No.
Yes. Motion carries. If you also, sir, would like a copy of this, we can come back in a couple of days, I'll have it signed for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item I have for the board's consideration, the resolution approving a waste disposal agreement, which the board selected this vendor at the last board meeting, Allied Waste, Temptation, we're giving them their Allied Waste Services. It's a ten-year contract, I believe, it will start effect July first, two thousand thirteen. I believe there's adequate assurances inside this contract for the board's and for the village's protection. There is representation from a couple of all state federal rules and regulations, there is proper identification, and we have the village with proper insurance certificates. They will also, the costs are spelled out in the agreement itself, the hours of operation, seven AM to six PM, I believe. In the event they do breach this, they're given thirty days to what they call cure the breach, if they do not cure the breach, the village does have the right to say, "Greedy," to declare the contract null and void. This would be subject to them tendering a performance bond, which I believe is supposed to be part of the contract, we talked to the gentleman, is not yet tendered, but the performance bond is important from our standpoint, and the gentleman did indicate that that bond would be forthcoming. That's for the board's review and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to note that Mr. Fox is president from Allied Waste, should you desire him to support.
Sir, would you like to come up to the podium, a minute? Share with us some of your knowledge? It won't take too long. Well, the trustee's obviously going to have some questions for you, it's best to get them out right now, and.
My name is Hank Foxon with Allied Waste. Go ahead.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Maybe it's, I, I believe we discussed about the compliance with the laws, it's supposed to say applicable federal, state, local, and regulatory provisions, you agree to regulatory provisions, or?
Right, I think I read it changed.
Okay, that's okay, I got to go copy, but that's fine. As long as.
Yeah, I, I'm ninety-nine percent certain that, that's what the administrator.
Yeah, I know, we talked about it, it's probably, and then you did everything else we talked about, I believe, inside this contract, so.
Does any of the trustees have any questions for this?
I have a question. First of all, we just say this, going back to our meeting two weeks ago, and I was initially to review the proposals presented by all three companies, and the various forms. And just to be clear, Allied's prices were the most competitive, and that's without question, I just wanted the opportunity to review that, so. Question I do have for you was, and also clarify, the other concern that I had was is that there's no, the surcharges that will get assessed to us, or fuel surcharges, and things like that, I just, that was the other thing, without seeing the proposals, that my state concerns previously. The question I have is on page fourteen, section fifteen, that zero newly developed areas, if those are annexed in additional areas and such, it talks about possible adjustments to contractors' prices for such new areas. I'm assuming our rates would be the same, or better, maybe, but they would not, they would just be multiplied by the number of.
Yeah. Picked up two hundred home subdivision, your bill would change by two hundred homes, by whatever the rate is.
The rate's going to be the same, it's not going to, so the, the price, the adjustment to pricing would just be the bill amount, but not the per.
Right, the unit count, that's all.
And the other question I had, I think, goes back to the discussion we had at the last meeting, was on page sixteen, under yard waste. I, from what I understand from reading the local paper, the village is going to be selling off their leaf back truck. The, according to this, on page sixteen, last fourth rule on yard waste, it says loose material of local trees will not be picked up. So I just want to clarify, so I, that means that if anybody has leaves in their yard or whatever else, they're going to have to either put it in a tote that's designated for yard waste, or left in bag?
Well, there's a third option with that, too, just a simple, this is what we recommend to people, it's the most cost-effective way for yard waste. If they were to get a thirty-five gallon container, you can buy it for ten dollars at local, home.
gallon container, you can buy them for ten dollars at the local home center.
Right.
Um, I will supply them with the decal, we'll leave a supply here at Village Hall, and all that says is yard waste on it, it doesn't have to be bought, it just, uh, identify that there's yard waste in that container, okay?
But I just want to clarify, because I know we were thinking that it was going to save us man hours and all that stuff, anybody who has yard waste now, not bundled branches and stuff to pick up.
Yes.
Okay, but any of the loose leaves will no longer be picked up by the village, or, as I said, or.
Yeah, that would be picked up.
Not loose leaves according to those.
Loose leaves means it's not in the can.
Exactly, just clarify that, because we, we were doing that as a village to a loose leaf pickup with a back truck, and we're not going to be doing that anymore, just want to clarify, so.
Okay.
Because I misunderstood at the last meeting then, because I got the impression that they're going to be doing, that's why, just for clarification.
Mr. Potts, thanks for coming up.
Thank you, appreciate the effort.
And I'd like to sound off a little bit for the trustees to know, um, we have a very good administrator working for us, and I'm proud of him, we spent four months sitting down with various companies, we get the best price for the people in the community, and this one is in particular that we looked at based on no prejudice, just what's good for the community, sir, and I think you offer a pretty good contract, and I want to thank Mr. Wallace, a lot of time went in us by a lot of people. Mayor? Resolution number?
Twenty thirteen-ish one.
Roll call.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Hap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to committee report, trustee Stockton, with finance, sir, do you have anything?
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Horn with police, how are you, sir?
Uh, I'm doing well, thank you, I, I got a, a small, uh, notification for the, uh, residents, just to remind you, after a two-inch snowfall, two, uh, parking on the roadway is prohibited, and reason for that is so the, our trucks can get around and plow and salt the streets, and if there's cars in the street, they have to go around and they have to come back again, so if you can remember to move your cars after two inches of snowfall. Hopefully, we won't have too much more, but you never know. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Gray with public property.
Uh, yes, I have one thing, I look at a community meeting next Tuesday at five PM, which is March fifth.
That's it, sir?
That's it.
Trustee Farco of public property, sir?
Nothing to tell you.
Thank you. Trustee Pop, Road and Bridge, sir?
I'd just like to say, I want, uh, the village, I felt, has done a commendable job on plowing the streets, uh, I know a lot of holes are popping up, and I, I know they're on that, so if you do have, uh, a problem on a section of road, uh, it's not that I want Mr. Wallace to be inundated with phone calls, but if you have a large one that, that couldn't break a tire or a rim or who knows what, call, call the village, and, uh, they can get on the list. I know, uh, our superintendent, Dave Frisell, is pretty good about driving around and looking for that kind of stuff too, so.
End of report. Thank you, sir. Once again, I'd like to get in on that, we have a lot to be proud of, our TPW, I'll put it up against any community in this area, we're, we're doing wonderful things these days due to the administration and supervision of the manpower, and we're going to see nothing but better as time goes on, and I'd like to thank Mr. Dave Frisell. Trustee Cranser, water, please.
You've got public property, sir.
Where've you been?
I don't know. I'm lost, never mind, I'm lost. Okay, I have one item.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking for an approval of contract for sanitary cleaning and televising on whiting wag, this is one, um, Administrator Wallace had attached a memo for everyone to look over, um, action for consideration is approval, with M&amp;J underground in the amount of three thousand six hundred sixty dollars, as you can see, it was the lowest proposal submitted for this work.
That's the form of the motion. So. Second. Any discussions, Mr. Wallace, would you like to explain?
Uh, sure, Mr. Mayor, uh, basically, as you know, it's a, uh, we have an ongoing fight with inflow and infiltration of stormwater into our sanitary sewer, we suspect that there is a new breach at this location, and in order to validate that and see the type of breach, um, we need to clean it and then televise it, uh, so this is something that has developed, I'm going to say recently, within the last year or so, and additionally, it is at such a depth that it, uh, it's, it's, uh, just out of reach for our, our crews to handle internally, it's, it's a pretty deep, uh, pretty deep sanitary sewer at that point, so. There were originally four companies interested in it and, uh, in the, in the bid proposal, uh, and, uh, we were submitted to. Happy to answer any questions, good, my comments.
Roll call, they don't want to talk to you.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Hap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Hap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Economic development, nothing to report this time. I, I'm sorry.
So how do you know I didn't have anything else?
Because I didn't have my.
You're right, no.
Okay, that brings us on to item K, unfinished business, we have any unfinished business?
We do.
Mr. Mayor, uh, from the last, uh, board meeting, it was, uh, there was a letter before the board, uh, from Eagle Ridge Farms requesting, uh, for a farm stand in the upcoming summer season, and, uh, the board at that point requested Mr. Rocky Baderman, uh, to appear so that some questions could be answered, and, uh, I did make contact with Mr. Baderman, asked him to appear tonight, um, so, yeah, so if we can, uh, have, uh, Mr. Baderman step forward, Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Bader, your name and.
Rocky Baderman, uh, live at sixty-one oh four West Eagle Lake Road, Piaton, Illinois.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions?
Unless, do you have pictures of that?
Well, we, as far as the stand goes, kind of got it open, um, kind of waiting for you guys to make a decision before, but what I'd like, what I'm proposing is to put up a portable building, uh, that way we can keep everything self-contained, everything looking much cleaner, much neater, uh, in fact, when we used to have the farm stand, we used to have a wagon out there, and we had, you know, stuff scattered around a little bit, so I'm trying to make this a cleaner, neater operation. The building, I don't really have a good, I've got three pictures here, you're going to have to read into the pictures a little bit, there's an arrow pointing towards one building in particular. The buil- building itself would be approximately twelve foot wide and twenty foot long, um, I'm trying to aim for a loft-style roofing, so it looks like a old-fashioned barn, I'm trying to keep this like an old-fashioned style farm stand with that kind of atmosphere inside of it. On the front of it, we want, our proposal is to get one built with a front porch, so it looks like an old farm stand where people can come out, sit, um, be able to lock everything up.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions?
The buil- uh, the building itself will be built, is built by Cook Buildings, uh, Cook Buildings is a Illinois manufacturer down in Anna, Illinois.
I know this is a temporary building, but is it staked in and around some way, does it need to be?
I don't believe it needs to be, but we can if you wish, but it's going to take an awful lot to move this building.
Well, that was, you know, my concern, just that some.
Unless we get a tornado, that building's not going anywhere.
Right.
And then I don't care if it's unfounded.
Now, is this just for fruits and vegetables, you're not going to be cooking anything, are you?
No, sir, we are not cooking in this building.
Or outside of the.
Or outside the building.
Or on the property or anywhere.
We are selling produce.
That's the answer, very good, thank you, sir.
It will be all, the produce will be, uh, grown, most of it will be grown locally, I personally will be growing the sweet corn and maybe a few other things, a lot of the other vegetables comes from two other locally grouped farms, one up in Madison, one up, one down in, uh, Moment's, some of the other stuff will come from a little further away, depending on the time of the season, like we'll be getting watermelons and so forth coming up from Georgia, and tomatoes out of Kentucky and Florida and so forth in the beginning, and as the season progresses, as we all know, the tomatoes eventually come from here, we get peaches from Georgia, they eventually come up through Illinois as the season grows and we finalize with Michigan peaches. We've also been accepted by the Illinois Department of Agricultural to use their new Illinois Fresh logo to help advertise for the locally grown products.
Is there a timeframe?
The farm stand would be approximately from the middle of July, no later than Columbus Day, may close sooner, uh, Labor Day is kind of like a, somebody flips a switch, sales go about fifty percent, depends on weather.
What's going to be seven days a week?
Probably.
What are they average?
Not a stable shift, it'll probably be approximately either nine AM, nine to ten AM to six PM, um, with the location that we've chosen, the main reason is we catch a awful lot of commuters off the rail, and Moni is the dividing line where they either go to Indiana, Kiki, Piaton, every different direction, once they pass this stoplight, it's a free for all.
I've got another question, I know that, uh, we're all dealing with businesses, uh, those up and you're in stuff like that, a couple of the other trustees have asked about sales tax, the village do anything out of it or not?
Well, there's one percent sales tax in the state of Illinois, and I don't know what the village does, I, I'm not in the village.
It's a one percent home rule.
Is that on food as well?
Council, do I believe so? I don't remember.
Okay, when you guys look it up, you tell me if we're charging sales tax.
Actually, that will follow the same criteria that the state sales tax follows, so if state sales tax taxes food, then our sales tax follows that same criteria.
All right, sales tax on food, I looked it up tonight, is one percent on anything that is non-cooked and not in the candy category, you know, so, so forth, again, we're selling produce.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I barely heard, I'm sorry. Here's a problem with the mic, it ain't working. There you go, there you go. Roll call.
Horn?
Yes.
Now, let's, let's be clear, this is stable.
Yes. Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranser?
Yes.
Hap?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Oh, I have one thing that I request, please keep it clean out there.
Oh, trust me.
I know sometimes when it picks up in the garbage, what are you going to do with your trash at the end of the night, because critters get in it.
Well, most of, a lot of the stuff will be hauled away, of course, we're going to have to have some kind of a vehicle to pull the stuff out there, but as we did last, when we had the farm stand prior, everything got hauled away at night, so.
Good.
There, and most of the containers we use to haul stuff, they're all recyclable, so.
Very good.
So we, we reuse, reuse probably just about everything.
Thank you, sir.
And we already are licensed with sales tax and all that with State Illinois, so, so we're all set to go.
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on new business? Okay. Eagle Ridge?
I just have a comment that I'd like to make.
Yes.
This actually is, is addressed to the board and to the residents, I sometimes feel that there are people in both the residents and the board that do not realize, wise people have enough, trust me, that do not realize that we are a board of six, when there is a tie, that is when the mayor votes, and I state this because comments are out in the community, and there are community members too that believe this, that it, there is one trustee that makes the decisions, decisions on this board, and I would just like to state, there are not, there are six of us, we all take a vote, you may all vote however you choose, I try and be logical when I take a vote, I think about what's good for everybody, not what's good for myself, and I hope that everybody sitting here does the same thing, but what I am furious with is the public thinking that when a vote is taken, one trustee makes that vote, because let me tell you, one trustee does not, I do not have a little string, help of Mr. Pop and Mr. Gray and Mr. Stockton and Mr. Farquhar and Mr. Horn that tells them how to vote, I do not have all the say on this board, we are a group of six, sometimes we disagree, as in tonight, I was not comfortable with two situations, I voted no, everyone else voted yes, that is my right as a elected official, but for a trustee sitting on this board to go back after a vote is being taken, or has been taken, and say to somebody in the public that, well, if she, and I'm the only she sitting here, so I'm going to say it, if she would have voted, it would have went through, or if she would have voted a different way, it would have went through, I'm sorry, I don't hold the strings on this board, and there's people in the public that think that I make all the decisions and, and certain things happen because of me, well, that's not true, and I just want it to be known that this board is a board of six, six of us vote, and I would appreciate the public understanding that it's six of us that vote, and I would appreciate the board members, if you don't like the way something is voted, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is, and I would appreciate if board members did not went out to go out to the public and say, well, if she would have done this, the outcome would be different, because that is not correct, that's all I have, thank you.
Well, trustee Cranser, I've got a question for you, apparently something's caught in your craw.
You think?
And I do think that.
Can you tell?
If you have something to say, finish it, because you're pointing towards some other trustee or other trustees, and maybe you want to explain your reasoning so the public knows.
Yes. You know what, at this time, no, I'm not going to explain, because if I, there's more to the public that I would like to explain, maybe perhaps to someone sitting in this audience, and I don't think that's appropriate, so I'll just refrain, I think, people that know who's doing it, both in the audience or in the public, if they watch this, and on the board knows who they are, and I think that my message got across.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on a new business? We're moving on, open in public, not agenda items, I'll report you, you need your name, your number, and you have three minutes to express your concern.
Senator Spack, two-five-six-five-four Firestone, just one question for Rocky, where is the farm stand going to be?
It's going to be a little bit north of Dan Hawke's county, where that little turnaround took the gravel over there, kind of, not really across from Bryant's, a little bit further south.
Kind of crossing auto path there.
Thank you, good spot.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, we're going to close the open in public, that would be the somebody else. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pop, what are you doing?
Yes, I, I just wanted to, uh, make a statement, uh, James Pop, two-five-six-five-two, Show Creek, Moni, Illinois, it's a little uncomfortable for me, but, uh, it needs to be said because my name was brought up in public about an issue, I don't know if it's on Facebook or, or what it was at, because you're looking at an illiterate computer person here, thank God for my wife, but my name was mentioned by you, Jay, about an illegal committee, that I'm doing something illegal, I know you've, uh, addressed the Attorney General about a committee, but you're portraying that I'm doing something illegal, this bothers me because I'm, I'm embarrassed by it, because. Yes, I, I just wanted to, uh, make a statement, uh, James Pop, two five six five two Show Creek, Mo Ment, I, it's a little uncomfortable for me, but, uh, it needs to be said, because my name was brought up in public about an issue, I don't know if it's on Facebook, or, or what it was on, because you're looking at an illiterate computer person here, thank God for my wife, but my name was mentioned by you, Jay, about an illegal committee, that I'm doing something illegal, I know you've, uh, addressed the attorney general about a committee, but you're portraying that I'm doing something illegal, this bothers me, because I'm, I'm embarrassed by it, because I'm not that kind of a person, and I wanted to bring that out in public, because it was brought out in public in another way, so I'm addressing it, saying that until the attorney general responds to this, and says a two-person, it is a committee even, first problem we have is we inadvertently probably put it under committees, but anyway, uh, I just wanted to get that out and be clear, that, that upsets me, I don't wanna rebuttal on it, I just wanted to get that off my chest, thank you.
Thank you, sir, ma'am. Great, you're sir, yeah, actually, I don't know about Facebook or anything else, we're here.
I don't, I don't know anything about any of it.
But just to be clear, I brought it up at the last board meeting.
You did, you brought it.
It's, it's quite direct and quite, uh, specific, uh, and Jim, I, I know you to be a man that desires to walk with integrity, I get it, okay, but it doesn't mean that at times, we don't do things that don't walk the line and follow the rules, deliberately or, or not, is not the issue, but there's a situation where we have committee structure that was put in place that bypassed.
This, this, Jay, without getting into a big debate, it's your opinion, no, no, it's your opinion, no one else's.
All right, Jim, can I say one more?
That's the avenue you've taken, and I, I don't particularly like the avenue where my name is mentioned.
We have business to.
I don't like getting into big debate, I made my statement, I'm done with it.
Counsel, we have anything to go in executive session about it? Sir? Is that on the collective bargaining, litigation? Which ones?
The way there's collective bargaining, may I, I just bring the board, put out the, the.
Boy, wait for, reads the going executive session on the section two C two, collective bargaining, um, no action to be taken afterwards, sir? Look for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Pop?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Cranser? Yes.